It is now seven o'clock. We will begin our March 14th Town Council meeting. And you will leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to begin with item C, Presentations and Recognizations. Do we have, other than our main presentation, do we have any recognitions?
No, not tonight.
Okay. And I'll just remind the council, today's public hearing is for the public comment. We are not asking questions. We will do that at our next meetings. So questions are for the public at this point. Okay, so we will move on to item D. Maureen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who, by the way, is wearing green, thank you. There are three of us that remember to St. Patrick's Day week. We still have days to catch up.
Week. Legal Notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Manager's 2023-2024 Recommended Budget, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 22nd day of February 2023. Kathleen A. Valensky, Town Manager.
Good evening, Farmington Town Council, members of the public. I present for your review the Town Manager's Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2324. The General Fund Budget includes the proposed spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The proposed budget for Westwood's Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included. The budget is broken down into three categories: expenditures, grand list, and revenues, which are used to develop a tax rate. This year is a very difficult budget year due to inflation and extremely high utility cost. In addition, the town has recently completed a state-mandated townwide revaluation. Because of this revaluation, there will be a large shift in the tax burden from commercial taxpayers to residential taxpayers. The town has not seen this type of shift in values in 15 years. For that reason, this budget includes three strategies that will lessen this year's tax impact without significantly reducing service levels that our residents expect. Strategies to lessen the tax impact. Reduce the town and Board of Education expenditures. The Town Council provide an expenditure budget target of no more than 2%. Based on current market conditions, this is a difficult target to achieve. A 2% budget target equals $664,951 of new spending. This year's fixed costs alone, negotiated salaries, benefits, and utilities with the existing employee count would have amounted to $1,261,777, or a 3.78% increase. This is significantly higher than the Town Council budget. In order to meet the 2% target, I reduced line item accounts across the budget, eliminated two full-time positions, a seasonal employee, and numerous part-time summer help positions. Meeting this target will lower some service levels, but will maintain our overall ability to provide the services our residents expect. Two, decrease capital funding levels. The capital budget has been reduced by 74%. Although deferring maintenance should never become the standard practice, deferring capital expenses for one year will not have a significant long-term negative impact. Three, use of the fund balance. An adequate fund balance must be maintained to allow the town to continue to meet its obligation in the event of an economic downturn or an unexpected emergency. The town's fund balance policy states that the town shall maintain a general fund balance equal to a minimum of 10%, with a targeted maximum of 15%. The town has worked hard to increase our fund balance, and currently the fund is at 16.4%. Therefore, I am proposing that this budget appropriate $1.2 million from the fund balance as a revenue line item. Even with this appropriation, we are still within our policy guidelines. Although these three strategies will help mitigate the tax increase driven by the revaluation, there still will be a large tax increase to the average taxpayer. Expenditures. I will now review the expenditure portion of the budget. Board of Education has a 2.99% increase. Town operations, a 1.99%. Debt service, a 7.07% increase. Capital outlay, a decrease of 74.23%. Board of Education-defined contribution, a 30% increase. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2324 is $122,9275, an increase of $743,042, or 0.61% above the current budget. Town operations. The town budget is broken down into five groups of accounts: general administration, public safety, public works, community recreation, and other. The increases and decreases for each group of accounts are as follows. The general administration group of accounts has decreased 0.66%. The public safety has increased 2.44%. The public works has decreased 0.41%. The community and recreation has increased 2.39%. Other has increased 4.93%. I am recommending the town budget of $34,45,271, an increase of $664,951, or 1.99% above current expenditures. Highlights of the town budget include the following. There is a reduction of two full-time positions: the building maintenance foreman position in the Highway Department and the AutoCAD specialist position in the Engineering Division. Both have been eliminated. There is no seasonal summer help funded in the Highway Department. There is no seasonal help funded in the Police Department. This seasonal help provided funding to hire staff during the summer months to patrol the various walking trails and parks throughout town. A Westwood seasonal golf course position has been eliminated. Historically, there has been two Westwood seasonal employees. This budget funds only one seasonal employee. A vacant part-time building inspector position has been eliminated. The police fleet account has a reduction of one new 24-hour patrol vehicle. Townwide technical equipment and current expense accounts are flat or reduced. The contribution to the Farmington Library is $2,894,000, which is a 2% increase above the current budget levels. There has been an increase in financing and administration to upgrade security systems on the townwide computer systems. Utility accounts have increased on average 11.12%, with heating fuel up 18% and electricity up 28%. Town expenditures by object. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases and decreases for each of the objects are as follows. Salaries are up 0.008%, benefits up 5.04%, supplies are down 0.86%, equipment is down 18.57%, contractual is up 1.21%, and utilities are up 11.12%. The recommended total town general fund appropriation is $34,45,271, which is a 1.99% increase above the current budget. Debt. The debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term debt obligations. The total amount recommended for the next fiscal year is $9,964,743. This is an increase of $658,087, or 7.07%. Special services. The refuse collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by town residents and the town's landfill operation. The budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will be $268 per household. Capital improvements. The proposed general fund appropriation to support the first year of the capital improvement plan is $1 million. This is a reduction of $2,881,000, or 74.23%. As discussed earlier, one strategy that I'm recommending is that the town's capital budget be reduced. Over the last 10 years, the Town Council has made a conscious effort to fund the capital budget to the levels established by our capital funding policy. Seven out of the last 10 years, the town has met or exceeded the capital policy recommendations and has made considerable investment in large capital projects. These projects, which have included a new high school, an upgraded water pollution control plant, fire apparatus, road improvements, and elementary school improvements, have been supported by the taxpayers. Deferring maintenance should not become the standard practice, but will be necessary this year because of the significant increase in the residential real estate values. General fund capital projects. Board of Education, $500,000 Board of Education projects to be determined by the Board of Education. Highway and Grounds, $280,000 for a replacement of a dump truck in the Highway and Grounds Department. Fire Department, $25,000 for hose. Police Department, $70,000 for technology improvements, $30,000 for a dispatch console station. In the Town Manager's Office, $35,000 for technology improvements, $35,000 for building equipment improvements, and $25,000 to the Unionville Museum. Next will be a summary of other appropriations. These capital projects are being funded by other funding sources, not through the general fund or taxpayer dollars. These funding sources include federal and state dollars and user fees. Community and recreational services, $55,000. Funds from the Recreation Fund will be used for fencing and gates at Tunxus Mead, softball fields, and fencing around the Skateboard Park. $922,000 Westwood's Recreation Facility and will be used for a new pickleball courts and a spray splash park. This is being funded by ARPA and STEEP funds. Fire Department, $100,000 for communication upgrades, and this comes from the LoSiP fund. Town Manager's Office, $7 million for the 1928 building renovation. That's the ARPA funds. Police Department, $208,000 for communication upgrades, and this is from the LoSiP funds. Planning Department, $25,000 Tinty Barn, and funds will be used, this was from the Open Space Funds. Summary of bonding. The first year of the capital plan proposes bonding for the 1928 building to be renovated into the new Town Hall. The Town Council set a total project cost of $16 million. This capital plan also includes $7 million in ARPA funds for the project. This would bring the cost of the project to the Farmington taxpayers to $9 million. A road reconstruction question for $4 million is also proposed. Water Pollution Control Authority budget. The Water Pollution Control Authority held a public hearing on its budget on March 8th. The budget was approved with a 4.75% increase per residential and commercial sewer user fees, as well as a 4.75% increase in the residential connection fee. This is the first increase in the budget in six years, and the increase is being driven primarily due to the cost of utilities. Expenditure summary. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2023-24 is $34,45,271, an increase of $664,951, or 1.99% above the current budget. I will now call on Kathy Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to present the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. It's my pleasure to present the Board of Education's Recommended Budget to the Town Council and Farmington community. The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year, our mission, vision of the global citizen, the framework for teaching and learning, which is our instructional model, our core beliefs, theory of action, and equity framework. As a leading school district, this alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of these visionary core improvement documents across all schools and all classrooms. From initial school submissions to the refinement of our operating budget through school and program reviews of all requests, zero-based budgeting practices were utilized. In addition, we were mindful and very thoughtful about the need to offset costs in this budget due to the economy, as well as increased student need due to the impact of the pandemic. We utilized federal ESER III ARP grant funding and other grant funds as we developed the 2324 operating budget. This slide shows Farmington's mission statement, which promotes personal and academic excellence for all students, as well as the acquisition of the skills and dispositions outlined in our vision of the global citizen, or VOGC. Throughout the budget review, you will see evidence of how our mission and vision of the global citizen have been a focus of the development of the 2324 budget. Our VOGC guides our improvement work, and thus it is the foundation of our budget or financial plan for the coming school year. Here are just a few photos of our VOGC in action. These photos reinforce and highlight the importance of our financial plan in supporting all students' acquisitions of each element of our VOGC. Here is a visual of how our core improvement documents, which are the foundation of our financial plan each year, are interconnected and serve as a strong foundation for strategic planning, curriculum development, instructional delivery, teacher and administrator goal-setting, hiring and recruiting, professional development, as well as our financial plan, the 2023-2024 Recommended Budget. As highlighted on this visual, our equity framework impacts the implementation of all of our core documents. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of this budget, here are the major themes of the 2023-2024 budget. The Board of Education's Recommended Budget maintains academic excellence through innovative programming, pre-K through 12th grade, promotes innovation in student-centered teaching and learning, advances programming, professional development, and resources aligned to the district's equity framework, as well as all of our core improvement documents, supports increased student needs in the areas of health, academic, and social-emotional well-being and development, especially due to the impact of the pandemic. It factors in federal ESER III ARP grant funding and other grant funding to offset costs to mitigate the overall increase in the operating budget, addresses significant cost increases across supply, equipment, energy, and other accounts due to the economy, contains costs through zero-based budgeting, reductions, and efficiencies to maintain and advance current programming, and maintains class size levels in accordance with Board of Education policy. This slide provides an overview of the recommended operating budget for the 2324 school year. The total recommended budget amount is $76,674,261 for a dollar increase of $2,226,300, or a percent increase over the 2223 budget of 2.99%. The major budget drivers related to our 2.99% increases are highlighted on this slide. It's important to note that approximately $940,000 was reduced from initial budget submissions to arrive at the Board of Education's Recommended Budget. In salaries, there is a 1.72% increase of the 2.99% increase, and this is due to negotiated contractual obligations and staffing needs as well as operational needs. In services, there is a 0.68% increase of the 2.99% increase due to increased utility costs and increased costs associated with contractual agreements, driven by also current economic conditions. In supplies, there is a 0.24% increase of the 2.99% increase due to increased cost of supplies driven by the current economic conditions. In equipment, there is 0.06% increase of the 2.99% increases due to increased costs for equipment driven by restoration of funding for technology equipment off ESER, and it also is contributed to the current economic conditions to support one-to-one devices for all students. All other drivers of the 2.99% budget increase are attributed to a 0.29% increase for all other areas, including but not limited to benefits, as well as dues and fees driven by contractual agreements. We have a long history of zero-based budgeting, cost avoidance, and efficiencies to ensure the Board of Education's budget request is both responsive to our students' needs and responsible to the taxpayers of Farmington. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts, with one spending the most and one 66% spending the least. It is important to note that Farmington ranks 112th in the most up-to-date per pupil expenditure reported by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other Connecticut school districts, which is $2,170 less per pupil than the state per pupil average. This year, if our per pupil expenditure was the same as the state average, our budget would be over $8 million more. We continue to exhibit exemplary physical management within Connecticut, and when you compare the Farmington School District to like school districts across many indicators. The first budget driver is salaries, the 100 series. The budget increase in the salary line is 2.61% and reflects negotiated contractual obligations. This series reflects all of the association's contractual salary increases for the coming year, which are highlighted on this slide. The next budget driver is insurance, or the 200 series, with a 1.55% increase overall, primarily driven by stop-loss insurance and fees associated with the administration of health insurance for all employees. Services is the next budget driver, the 300 series. There is an increase of an overall 4.77% increase in the services series driven by increased student need and increases in contractual agreements across many areas of the budget due to the economy. Most are required services that we are unable to reduce due to state and federal laws and statutes, as well as contractual obligations. The next series is supplies, or the 400 series. The supply series reflects a 9.35% increase overall due to the economy and increased costs across all of the supply accounts. These are costs that are needed to run daily operations, as well as supplies for educational delivery for over 4,000 students projected to attend schools in the 2023-2024 school year. The 500 series, or equipment, reflects an overall increase of 12.17% due to a need for updated equipment, as well as a phased approach to moving equipment off grant funding to the operating budget. As we plan for the end of ESER funding in the summer of 2024, we are planning ahead for the 2024-2025 budget year so that we aren't facing a situation when ESER funds go away and we need to absorb significant costs within the operating budget all in one year. Dues and fees, or the 600 series, shows a 10.05% overall increase. The account includes memberships in organizations that support our strategic improvement efforts. This account also includes the Town of Farmington's negotiated liability umbrella and motor vehicle insurance for the school district, and the increase is due to negotiated and contractual liability umbrella and motor vehicle insurance. Here is a view of the entire Board of Education's Recommended Operating Budget for the 2023-2024 school year, all of which I reviewed within this budget presentation. In summary, the 2324 Recommended Budget maintains educational excellence, equity, a focus on student well-being, innovative teaching and learning, and acceleration of learning aligned to our vision of the global citizen. The budget is responsive to our students' needs, especially given the impact of the pandemic, given our students' both their academic progress and social-emotional well-being. Most Connecticut school districts are facing much larger budget increases in 2023-2024 due to the economy and the impact of the pandemic on student learning and well-being. Given a history of collaborative budget development aligned to our core improvement documents, we are currently positioned to address the challenges that the economy has presented while also ensuring excellence in all aspects of our work with students with the financial plan we have brought forth for your consideration. The fiscal information presented today and the reported district and student achievement results represent a value-added approach to strategic planning, improvement, and budget development. At all times, our strategic improvement efforts and financial plan are centered upon our students, their needs, and their future as self-aware individuals, empowered learners, disciplined thinkers, engaged collaborators, and civic-minded contributors. The Board of Education's Recommended Capital Budget is outlined on this slide and was presented and reviewed at the Town Council's meeting on February 28th, 2023. The capital request totals $2,36,000 for technology, infrastructure, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, school security, structural architectural, school code and safety, telephone system, cafeteria equipment, replacement of vehicles, and classroom furniture, as well as a bonding request of $15,93,373 for HVAC upgrades at all four elementary schools, East Farms, Noah Wallace, Union, and West District. Thank you for your attention to this presentation and your thoughtful review of the Board of Education's Recommended 2023-2024 Operating and Capital Budget Requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I will now review the grand list. State law requires a townwide revaluation every five years. A revaluation is the process of verifying property data and analyzing economic data, and then appraising all town real estate at a common point in time. The purpose is to equalize assessments at a common level so that all property owners pay only their fair share of the property tax burden. The last revaluation was as of October 1st, 2017, and the market has changed at different rates for different kinds of properties since then. The property revaluation will reflect the market as of October 1st, 2022. The result of this revaluation is that the grand list increased by 18.42%, Real estate grew by 20.54%, which shows the strength of the Farmington market. Revenues. I've broken down revenues into nine categories: other property taxes, license and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, Westwood's contribution, and fund balance. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are $13,864,037, or a 21.43% increase over the current year. Areas to note: state and federal grants have been increased from last year. Interest has increased by $547,000. I am recommending that the town appropriate $1.2 million in fund balance. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 24.38 mils, a decrease of 4.94 mils. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,438 in taxes. The average homeowner with a house assessed at $301,455 will see a 10.50% tax increase. Conclusion. In conclusion, this year's budget has been made difficult by a number of factors, primarily the state-mandated revaluation. Due to the revaluation, even if the expenditure stayed constant, it would result in a 12.25% tax increase built into the budget. One of our strategies to help mitigate this tax increase included keeping expenditures flat. This has been accomplished without drastically impacting services to our residents. Even though the proposed tax increase is significant, it is driven by the revaluation rather than expenditures. Due to the revaluation, real estate values increased while the mill rate decreased. This reduction in the mill rate will lower the taxes that a resident will pay on their motor vehicles, which may offset the increase in total taxes. The Town Manager's Recommended Budget includes mitigation strategies that allows us to continue to be guided by sound financial policies and best practices. The results will not produce long-term negative impacts to either service levels or our financial position. The public hearing on the Town Council's budget is April 3rd, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers. The annual town meeting is April 17th at 7:00 PM at the Farmington High School Auditorium. And the townwide referendum is Thursday, April 27th, at your usual polling place. We are also going to meet Wednesday, tomorrow night, and Thursday night, and Saturday night to review the Board of Education's budget and the department heads' budgets, and go through everything in detail. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jen. At this point, we will open up the floor to any public comments on this topic only. We will have another public comment section later. But if there's anyone here in the room who would like to comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. As I stare out at the empty rows of seats, I can't help wondering what 20,000 Farmington voters are doing on a rainy Tuesday night. Perhaps we should send out a little community survey. What's that, Kathy?
We don't want to know.
Yeah. So as I try to represent here and look at the budget as proposed, it's somewhat sobering to see that we don't think we can run the combined Town of Farmington for $10 million a month. So it's certainly a lot to manage, and I appreciate that. When you step back and take a look at where we are, it's really now projecting a homeowner tax increase that is double-digit in nature. And I think that's particularly difficult, given that 20% of our residents are over the age of 60. The other thing is, the current projected tax increase would be twice the rate of the core CPI inflation number, which was just released earlier today. So definitely a tough situation for the town to be in, and I certainly respect the effort that goes into improving our situation here. My hope and my confidence is that we can find a way is that we can find a way to lower the tax increase to be something less than 10%. I think that's a goal we really need to be striving towards. My only request would be that, as we go through the week for proceedings, that both the town and the schools put together one page or one slide that just lists the number of budgetary savings accounts that we carry and how much funding we think we have in each of those. So, that'll be helpful as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else here in person that would like to speak, it is now your moment to come forward. Seeing none, do we have anyone online? Kat?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, we'll give them a moment to put their thoughts together. Still no one? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. Okay, moving on to item E, new items? We have none this evening. Now, we will go on to item F. This is our moment for public comment on any topic you wish whatsoever. So, is there anyone here in the room who would like to comment on any other issues other than our public hearing? Seeing none here in person? Kat, is there anyone online who would like to comment on anything whatsoever? Okay. No other public comments. We will close public comment, move on to item G.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes for February 27, 2023, regular Town Council meeting.
Second? We have a motion and a second to accept the February 7 meetings. Do we have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously.
Item G2, I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes for February 28, 2023, regular Town Council meeting.
Second? A motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to reading of communications and written appeals. Do we have any?
No, we do not.
We do not. Okay, moving right along to reports of committees. The 1928 Building Committee.
Even though our meeting was canceled today, our value engineering still is going through the process of investigating different ideas and ways to cut costs in order to come in or try to come in under budget for this project.
Great, thank you. Farmington High School Building Committee.
Our next meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 PM, which I will not be able to attend because we'll be happily discussing budget. But it's exciting, we're seeing lots of steel in the air, and things are moving along. We're getting regular meetings with scheduled updates and prices of, you know, items that were a little bit unforeseen, everything controllable at this point.
Great, thank you, Jen. Green Efforts Committee.
The big news for Green Efforts is Townwide Cleanup Day on April 22. So, town website, other areas, see the notifications come out, sign up for the team, sign up individually. This is where we get a chance to go around all the different areas of town and get all the trash that's left on the side of the road by people that are not ourselves. But we want to do our civic duty and get the town of Farmington looking as beautiful as it can.
Great, thank you. And do we have details on where people meet at this point, or that will be forthcoming?
There's going to be a sign-up genius that will be out there and the usual places of IAR and the firehouse. I'm going to forget the other one, but places to pick up bags and go back and to get weighed for totals. There are some prizes. I know that that's not the motivation for getting out and clean, but there's more information to come.
Great, thank you. Land Acquisition, yeah, Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Race Equality Task Force.
Yes, we successfully completed our Winter Community Conversation Series, and now we are joining forces with some Farmington Valley towns to do a Juneteenth celebration that's being headed by the Simsbury Council, or their chamber, basically. And hopefully, we'll get everything back together, and we'll start our meetings up in the next month or two.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to reports of the Council Chair and Liaisons. The Council Chair, the biggest report is, this is Budget Week, so we hope we're getting the public engaged here. We will be here tomorrow, Thursday, and Saturday at the very least. And as was mentioned earlier, you can check the entire schedule for the town meeting and whatnot on the town's website. Other than that, again, as was mentioned earlier, our grand list is at an all-time high now of almost $4.5 billion. That's actually a very impressive thing. Our town has done a great job, not just throughout COVID, but in general, of bringing individuals and bringing companies to our town. We have a very robust industrial base in town. Actually, Trump just had a groundbreaking for a new addition over there, a big international corporation right here in Farmington. They could have gone anywhere. They came to Farmington for their North American headquarters. So, very impressive. We also, every week, seem to have other businesses opening up. We just had a smoothie shop, Liquid Nirvana, opening up at the Highland Park area, so stop in and get yourself a smoothie and a sandwich there. And that is all I have for the Chair's report. So, I'll move on to Conservation and Inland Wetlands.
Okay, so Inland Wetlands is having a meeting online tomorrow, March 15, to discuss the modification of prior approval for trenching/excavation at a property at 402 Farmington Avenue. They will also be discussing regulated activity within the upland review area related to making a beach area swimmable at 95 Patterson Park Road.
Great.
Immediately after that, the Conservation Committee will be following to discuss the household hazardous waste collection date of March 25, 2023.
Very good, thank you. I think that Patterson Park, you'd mentioned it, but just to emphasize, is for a beach area, not actually to go in the water. I believe they're not ready for people to go in the water at Patterson Park, but they're trying to make the beach safe for people. Okay, Board of Education Liaison.
So, the Board of Ed met on February 4 and February 6, and they adopted a budget, which you heard about just a few minutes ago. They also met on March 7, and among other things, they voted unanimously to appoint Melina Rodriguez as the supervisor of special services.
Great, thank you. Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee is in the process of making their list for the next year and their goals, and we'll probably have that at our next meeting. Economic Development Commission.
Yes, the EDC met on March 8. The EDC issued a positive referral for Town Farm Development's application to modify the existing permanent special permit conditions for the Farmington Polo Clubs at 152 Town Farm Road. Some of the key changes that are being requested are increasing the number of events that are greater than 400 people. These are outdoor events from the current limit of 12 per year to 25. And one of the other key changes is increasing the number of parking campers for horses from 2 to 6. The EDC also hosted their Business Breakfast on March 1, and the keynote speaker was Mr. Steve Sullivan, the President of Connecticut Electric Operations for EverSource. The event was very well-attended, and Mr. Sullivan answered many questions about electric rates and the security of our grid. And the next EDC meeting is April 12.
Great, thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Nothing new to report, but our next meeting will be next Tuesday here on the 21st at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. Housing Authority.
So, our next meeting is tomorrow, which is now canceled because we'll be happily here discussing the budget. So, we're in the process of trying to reschedule that meeting because our annual approvals are due by the 16th, so we'll have more for next meeting.
Okay. Human Relations.
The Human Relations Commission meets on March 22, and students from the Social Justice Club will be talking about the Farmington High School 2023 Social Justice Week, and the Diversity Event Subcommittee will be reporting out regarding concepts for a future event to be sponsored by the Human Relations Commission.
Great, thank you.
Oh, may I add one thing?
Sure.
Sorry, I should have, you should have talked about it, but Project Graduation, for anybody that knows about or doesn't know about it, it's like one of the largest events that the community, the town of Farmington, puts on for their graduates. It's a chemical-free, substance-free party, and their biggest fundraiser is coming up. And it is going to be March 25 at 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM, and it's a casino night. So, if you're interested, please go out and support. It's supposed to be a really fun night, and I just wanted to give them a little plug. You can Google Project Graduation 2023, and it'll come up with all the information.
Great, so that would have been under Board of Education?
Well, kind of.
That's okay. Library Board.
Library Board is in the process of searching for a new director, and they are also dealing with their budget. Their next meeting is tomorrow night.
Great. Town Planning and Zoning.
Town Planning and Zoning met last night. Two bigger public hearings were continued to the following meeting, one being a subdivision by Coop Farms, and the other being, I don't know what the right word for is, reinstalling a gas station over by Plainville Avenue, the old gas station we've all been looking at for many years. And both those were continued.
Okay. Unionville Historic District Commission.
Nothing new to report.
Unionville Village Improvement Association.
Also, nothing new to report.
Okay, quiet in Unionville these days. Water Pollution Control Authority.
Yes, as our Town Manager stated in her report, they had a meeting last week and voted for that 4.75 rate increase. So, it went from 321 to 336.25 per house, which is a $15.25 increase.
Okay. Any other liaisons that I missed? All right. Reported the Town Manager. I believe she has none this evening. She feels she's spoken enough, evidently. Appointments.
Yes. Agenda item L4, that Richard Dubois be appointed to Plainville Area Cable TV Advisory Council for the balance of a two-year term